At six forty-six, so I recall last night to see your school board meeting to order. And welcome to everybody in our location. We have a little more room, so welcome to everybody with us now. And seeing as we're participating. So if you would join us in the pledge of allegiance. Amy. And so Chris Lee, Chris, he has a little mom. Trusty Bowser here, trusty regard.
Yes.
Trusty Vanderhyde, she's excused. And treasure Gilmore.
Here.
Secretary Slaker here, Vice President Shotner.
Here.
President Reed here. Thank you, and we have established a report. We will move on to our adoption of the agenda and I would propose amendment. And Rob Mickelson, Director of the Planning. To discussion by the main committee members. So I would enter to motion for approval of the agenda with them.
So.
Or any session? I think none, Mr. Chris Shotner.
Yes.
Secretary Slaker, yes. Twitter Gilmore.
Yes.
Justice Mark.
Yes.
Justice Bowser.
Yes.
As you read, yes, the agenda is adopted, yes presented. That brings us to the grant it to. Now, open up, open tables with that. I'm just grateful for everyone that's here tonight. It's great to see more participation from the community, so thank you for coming.
Yeah, I too am grateful that everybody is here. You hear what everybody has to say. Uh, you can see us through our business, thanks for being here.
Yep, similarly, I would thank people who are a bit old enough to be able to come and share their experience in the classroom at the public comment. I would assume you get some good color comments tonight as well, so I appreciate that. And then we've also got some great information from emails and some of you sent forward, so thank you for that.
Like to thank staff. Being married to one, she is going into the teacher mode of preparing. And a little crazy in our household, but I know that that carries over to a lot of households. A lot of families that have teachers and staff that are preparing for this upcoming school year. Just very appreciative of all the hard work that goes into their preparation. For us to teach more kids. Thank you to you guys, administration as well.
I'd like to then, well, continue. Question, do you remember process cases of the year? Well, the question was, did everybody stay back?
I'm thankful that we are able to get back into Cedar Trails and that the project is going to be completed over the next few weeks. So the baby will be ready to go. And just for all the work that's going on at the scenes by all of our staff. Maintenance and facilities and as well as teaching staff and administrative staff that have been put into play to be ready for the upcoming school year. It is thirteen days.
Okay. I have, yes, I have something to. Oh, thank you, everyone. We'll move on to our consent items and I would enter to motion.
So vote, support.
Oh, Vice President Shotner.
Yes.
Secretary Slaker, yes. Twitter Gilmore.
Yes.
Justice Mark.
Yes.
Justice Bowser.
Yes.
As you read, yes, the consent items are approved, yes presented. That brings us to the discussion portion of our meeting. And now we will have our department updates. And that will review, introduce those in the table.
Sure, so we'll start off with our academic services update from Jen.
Well, it has been a busy several weeks planning for all of the many events that are coming, including new teacher orientation. As Heidi mentioned, we had our new teachers in the first two days last week for some joint training and then individualized. Uh, based on their secondary or elementary placements for the rest of the week. Um, and that was a fantastic way to start. Uh, we also started with our MGM team, our admin team last week and had very much a heavy today, quick updates kind of what has happened since we saw you at the end of June meeting. Um, and Stacy and I have been planning for the threads that will fall all the way through the whole year this year. So we're really holding on to two large focuses that you will see when we get to our professional development plan in just a little bit. Um, including intentional evidence-based instructional practices and positive climate and culture in buildings. And you know, those two things go hand in hand. You first talk about that with our MTSS systems work. This very much will tie into that and will be the next second in the journey. So we have a full year plan for all of the half days, all of the district development PD days, and then the two P P O days that we have.
Okay, the next, uh, first, are there any questions for Jen? Any regard for our academic services program? Okay, I can sign them with a quick facilities update.
Yes, and welcome to our first short of summer in a long, long time. Are we doing that right now? So we're getting there. The bond construction has been great, um, thanks to GMV and Triangle and some pre-planning that went on. We are not, like many school districts in the state right now, that don't have the equipment to finish their work. We aren't like other districts that had to lay their work because they weren't going to get them. So thank goodness, we had some pre-planning, some forethought, we purchased our stuff, we had to store, we're ready to go. Middle school lots, they're done. The team of Dean, uh, GMV Triangle, the Dean, uh, excavating, doing their work over there. Uh, the light loads for the asphalt, pillar electric for the work, everybody's worked so well together. Uh, it's just, it's been fantastic. Uh, GRBS has been cleaning around all these activities, including the summer school, two of our buildings which run right up until we get to back to school. Um, the bomb burn, which they're now in the trails cleaning, trying to get that cleaned up section by section so we can get people back in. And the work group, which was, I don't know if you knew that in the middle school, we had a group that spent a week there that did community work. Fantastic group of people, they were so polite, so clean, so organized. And GRBS helped clean that up, but that group itself deserves some recognition. Uh, we've done the maintenance work at all schools, as usual, PM work, the gym floors, the ovens are going to be installed at Red Hawk soon, the ones. The painting crew was a star, let me tell you, but Jay Blumberg and Andrew DeGroot running the students, the students were, we said again, we're in Skyler Bowen, Ray L. Sarniak, Corinne Wild, Justin Bosco, Alyssa Detwiler, Luke Price, and Aaron Carr. And let me tell you, they rocked. They kicked out some painting, we painted, they painted all of Cedar View. I expected a little bit here, a little bit there, a little bit there. Once they got going and they got their rhythm, look out, they'll get there, it was great. So that was, that was great. Red Hawk, we've done some cleanup in the courtyard, Cedar View repairs to some trucks with some HVAC, which will be replaced soon. Uh, Beach Gym was painted, High School Gym was painted, uh, the ends again. Uh, fence repairs, ball field maintenance, lighting switch over, L E Ds continuing, ceiling tiles around the district are being replaced, the bad ones, the normal summer stuff. But it's that insurance schedule that gave us the, ooh, boy, we're in trouble before we made it. That's my.
Very good. Thanks Ken. Any questions for Ken regarding to facilities, maintenance, or operations?
Ken, you don't see anything delaying any problems in any building, does that rise every time? Yes, we're good to go.
We're good to go. We have Cedar Trails, there's been a little question mark on some foils and a pump that has to come in, but they were coming in this week. So we will be right there.
That's right. Congratulations, let's go.
Thank you, that was, that was good for the whole thing.
Thank you.
The, the student painting was a, a example of Ken kicking outside the box and partnering with Matt Blood at the time to bring together a group of students who would be able to, to work. We had a couple of individuals who were permanent subs for us last year that stepped in to be leaders for the students, but who really, I think, have found a gem with some great employees who could really, you know, bring a lot of energy, enthusiasm to the, to the buildings this, this year. So we see that continuing as we move forward. For this student work crew is in our, for this, some students who can need a job next summer, uh, know it will be hiring handful to do projects around campus. All right, a financial update with Mr. Chris Lahey.
Uh, real quick, before I get to that, I'll piggyback, uh, I, I have a few former colleagues in the district nearby, uh, that have had similar summer projects. They're teachers, uh, and they were in their classroom at the end of last week. And everything's still pulled out, there's nothing in the classrooms, nothing's clean. They're mildly freaking out with a week and a half to go, so we're in a good place compared to a lot of these. So it's trying to do the same, same work. So, um, as far as our budget update goes, in Board Book, you have the year-to-date, see, it's very close, um, as we close out the year. That was, uh, as of last Tuesday, when I uploaded this to Board Book. So there have been some entries, um, and some slight changes, but pretty much looking at it, we're very close to that, uh, to that ship coming in. Uh, the bond budget update is in there, that's through July thirty-first, that's running on a, on a basis where it's updated every month. There really was no changes in July, as this work was completed, it'll be built out, we'll see a lot of bills coming in, voices coming in from Triangle, uh, and GMV here later this month. Um, our fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one financial audit actually commenced today, and today, our auditors were on-site, they will be primarily this week. Um, so one day now, things are going well, and that's why you'll see those last-minute, uh, entries as we, as we capture that August stated, and it still hasn't been posted. So we'll have some of those after audit entries that were kind of out of, out of our control, um, but we're, we're confident everything will go well as, as usual there. And then the only other thing in the financial audit, uh, that really caught my eye and I'm paying close attention to. You remember with last year, there was a lot of flexibility in pupil accounting, uh, where we could, uh, count two-way communication just because of all the online learning and that type of thing going on across the state. Uh, so really, we could count students in a, in a nonlinear way. But this year, the state of Michigan has dropped all that flexibility, we're right back to where we were in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Um, we need to have a hundred and eighty instructional days, at least a thousand ninety-eight hours. Uh, so as we navigate this new school year, we're hopeful that we can keep kids in school, keep them in class, because we need to go back to the traditional way, uh, in which to count them more, more involved. So just something to be mindful of as we go forward, and on something if you go to M E S B and those types of meetings, you'll see that mentioned. So it's very important to keep in mind, that's all.
Any questions for Chris? Perfect, uh, moving our attention over to Human and Community Services with Mr. Mark Delby.
Thank you, it's great feedback, it's in spring, thank you for the opportunity. Uh, it's a real busy time for us, and I don't have much to compare to, because I have done this before. But, uh, I imagine, uh, it's been pretty similar to this in the past years. We've got a lot of openings right now, we're dealing with the total oppositions. We have a few certified jobs that are posted currently for elementary council at Red Hawk. Uh, one point six resource room teachers, special education, uh, elementary art teacher at Beach. And, uh, we have some structural support positions open. Uh, we hired a couple of interventionists, we still have a campus interventionist position available at Red Hawk. Looking for a virtual learning coach at high school. Uh, a program assistant, an aide, if you will, in preschool, and program assistant, uh, with restricted environment at high school. Our service currently has three openings. We've got five openings for recess aid positions. So you know, you know many people who will be looking, those are going to be tough to fill in food service and all those part-time jobs. So we are looking for, uh, individuals. Uh, campus kids aid has a couple of positions open, morning and after-school as well. Of course, we have a facilities, uh, maintenance and operations director position to fill. Uh, in sports, we have JV baseball, competitive cheer, sideline cheer to fill. Band has, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight positions yet to fill for marching dances, uh, season four assistance. High school's got freshman, sophomore, and senior class advisors to fill, National Honor Society advisor, ball play director, and vocal music director for the high school musical. And we're filling, rounding out some subpositions, we have three or four people that we started the year on leave. And, uh, it's challenging getting long-term substitute positions.
If anyone is under the task, you should go to the ask, we, uh, we, the word. Uh, any questions, uh, from the board or?
That's a lot of vacancies that we have, I'm concerned about being able to fill those, or what's our outreach plan to be able to attract some talent to Cedar?
Well, I, I do have concerns for a couple of those positions, certainly. I mentioned the, the aid positions, and that's everything that you're asking. People come in a little late for a couple hours, so after school for a couple hours. So those are hard to fill. We are putting a communication out to community, I think it's going out tomorrow. Uh, we're asking for people to help us out and to look for those positions. The resource rooms positions for special education, everybody has trouble filling those all year long. And so I don't expect that that's going to be any different now, so, you know, we're trying the best we can.
Yeah, it's gonna be a challenge. Thank you.
And those challenges are in, across the labor market, so it's not just education that is struggling to fill some of those positions, particularly the alphabet positions.
Is there a way, I thought we could share it, um, with people that we know also, is it, I mean, obviously, I have a trip on our website, is there a Facebook page or anything like that, where we could share what that we know?
Yo, I'm sorry to say that I do not know if it's on the Facebook page, but I know that, uh, the, I know that Amy is going to uphold those aid positions like that in Facebook, and market that way. Uh, I don't know about the list of jobs, if you're looking at that.
Okay.
It's so many.
Could you, so I can do some correspondence, and I can even just share, just saying that we are looking for these non-aid positions, um, just because we are, oh gee, September and, um, you know, like, my, you know, my husband wanted to marry me, and that's something, I mean, like, I'm on the subway or something like that, but I'm not sure what the qualification area, as I just said, if it has changed or relaxed a little bit. Um, but just for me to share it, get the word out there before.
So certainly.
Other jobs in, in Michigan.
And we will, we will, if I sell something, we have to share, uh, the need for book officials as well, just like we did last year, if we were calling, when we were looking for substitute teachers in the middle, throughout the year, then we'd last the social. Okay, okay. And Amy has been sharing that on a regular, she has a site, all of the information that she shares.
Okay.
So yeah, we'll make sure we get that out to you. All right, any other questions for Mark?
Thank you, Mark, for being willing to answer.
All right, a quick student services update with Stacy and Bosco.
Yeah, so I wanted to comment, we are not close to September, we are far from September. Yes, August floor, it was only midway through the summer, so let's not watch. So summer has been very, very busy, working with Jen, uh, developing our administrators, professional learning, and really making sure that we are grabbing onto the things that are important and letting those of the things that aren't, so that they are placed manageable instead of all of them. So we're really, really hard to really streamline our approach and this professional learning for administrators. And then student services support and special education support, we are focusing on specially-designed structure all year for our special educators, which really is the special on special at, it's what is different and what's going on in general. So that's our professional learning series for special educators.
Any questions for Stacy in Student Services? Very good, and then our last department update is Robbie or the technology?
Thank you, uh, that's it, uh, thank you for, uh, giving our, for that. Peter, the tech team's been very busy working on Chromebooks, very Chromebooks, uh, this year, Chromebook, we, uh, check the, uh, update them. So, getting those out starting next week. Additional, we've got more software, so our student applications are ready to go for page one. We've actually, uh, upgraded some infrastructure, firewall, so. Five, four, other security, more bandwidth, so. Check that connection, so we can do that outreach. Every day, just work staff, especially supporting the new staff.
Any questions from, uh, in the technology department?
Yeah, I, I would just ask, are we, uh, do we have the right one, Chromebooks, have we all sat with that, is there any concern that we, we get school there, we? You didn't have any concerns? No, everything's in order, yes, great.
So that completes the department updates.
Okay, and then back to students' handbook revisions, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two.
So in, uh, in Board Book, we uploaded, or I uploaded versions of each of the building handbooks. Uh, you'll notice that the formatting was a little different this time from the previous versions. Uh, Amy McCarthy, our communication specialist, has found a company, she actually utilized this group, uh, they are formal, expect them help to do the proofing for all of their documents, and it's a company called Bullet. And, uh, so Amy actually reached out to them and asked that they would be willing to, uh, take a look at our handbooks. They'll also be, uh, working with our, our other significant publications that we send out over the course of year. It's, it's just another set of expert eyes that, uh, goes through each of the documents. And so, um, what you have is Bullet Groups identified corrections, and then we look back in and incorporate those corrections into the actual documents. Uh, so although Chris had a little bit of a coronary at the additional invoice for services, uh, it's not, not too significant, but, um, it's a, it's, it's something that, you know, as they prove it, once we get it right, then the proofing is much simpler each, with each subsequent version. Uh, and so, uh, a couple of questions that Tracy had brought forward in our discussion in July was in regard to, uh, the reasons for unexcused absences and tardies. And if you'll notice that we removed that, though, that language in both the middle school handbook and in the Red Hawk handbook. You know, it was, the thing was that we listed things for which you would be excused, and then we listed just a handful of things for which you'd be unexcused. That didn't make sense, because there would be multiple other reasons. And so we pulled that language out, and so hopefully that satisfies the question.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so, um, and other than that, you know, again, the, the high school version that I uploaded over the weekend, and the only change is the suggestions that Bullet Group made, uh, when they went through their, their work of editing. So the high school handbook is essentially the same as it was last year, with the exception of some date changes, et cetera, changes, that type of thing. As are the other, so hopefully the formatting is more user-friendly for our families and students. And, uh, there will be fewer errors on the editing perspective because of the work that I've. Yeah, and the format, you know, as, as an edit is made, there's a, there's a comment inside, so you can see what was actually done. So hopefully it's a, it's a process that, that you, that works for you.
Do you have anything else, because they're reading it, ask if they're covered. If somebody's trying to, we've all seen it multiple times, but other people, it's been a hit, so it's, we do that.
Hey, we, I think it makes us, uh, more user-friendly. Everybody.
And it's on correction.
No other questions?
Yeah.
Right, if we have a sinking fund, village proposal with Chris Haynes, that's me.
It's, this is in Board Book, as presented in the last meeting we had. And the language is in there, the resolution is in Board Book as well. Uh, this would be a ten-year renewal of the existing One Mill Civic Fund. Uh, and, uh, we need to take action this evening, because if, uh, the board chooses to do so, I need to take it down to Kent County, uh, by tomorrow at four p.m. So, uh, we'll approach it down to Grand Rapids. Of course, any questions to be, if you have any issues.
Just to clarify, this is just extended. Additional. Additional, several people's. And then it's also opening up to use technology, but that is a good thought.
Correct, so we can, it opens it up so we can use the dollars of technology and security. It's our, you know, we're, we're not an existing part of that model language, whatever that's originally. So, yep, it would extend it, obviously, if this doesn't extend it, it puts it on a separate second ballot.
You know, Rod and his team have been running some numbers in terms of what's the anticipated annual cost to make sure that our, we have a replacement planned place, so that at the end of, you know, we don't want to be in a place four years from now where we, all of our Chromebooks have exceeded their useful life. And so Rod has been working to put together a plan where we will incrementally buy a lot of Chromebooks and then rotate those into the mix on an annual basis. So for example, each incoming freshman would get a new device that then they would use over the course of their four years at high school. Uh, each, is it sixth grade, Rod?
Yes.
Sixth grade and ninth grade would be the two years in which students would get a new device as a part of the annual cycle. And the thinking was, is that maybe a sixth grader would be a little bit more, uh, active with their device than a high school student would be. And so we could get another year of the lifecycle of that high school device in comparison to the, to the device that's issued to the middle schoolers. Now, we know that there would be devices that exceed that window of, of life expectancy, uh, and then we would cycle those devices back in, uh, making sure we're taking care of our elementary lab, our elementary laptop targets and that. So really, it's, you know, if you have a one-to-one approach to technology with your students, you have to have an annual incursion of investment. Uh, because if you don't, you'll, you'll find yourself, you know, a little pickle down the road if you do not plan that. So I really appreciate it, with that, Rod and his team have managed to put that plan together. Um, and then the other, you know, like, uh, Ken, his team have identified that, you know, we have some serious issues with, uh, you know, that's just another example of a project that is not in the general fund budget. Uh, but will likely cost somewhere between six and eight hundred thousand dollars to rent it. And that's not in the bottom either, you know, and so a sinking fund will be able to take care of projects the way that, you know, research and technicals, for example. Other, you know, initiatives that would be in buildings, purchasing new furniture, some of those, you know, those types of things would be just ongoing investments that we would continue to continue across the, across the district. Would all, which would also be a part of our annual maintenance and facility plan that we would be following as well. So it's, it will be a thoughtful expenditure over the course of time to necessarily upgrade some improvements throughout the process.
With furniture, you're talking about too, also, like the damp CD, like, there's, there's some studies about that, um, it's just not even desks and chairs anymore, it's, especially for elementary age kiddos, the, the, the CD helps kiddos learn, you know, at all, but it's tires. That's, that's also, right?
It couldn't, yeah, it would never be the type of, you know, with this dollar score. It could be, yeah, it would never be the type of things that are stored.
This is a new item, so I'm gonna actually put it up here at the, but I heard this turn off, so hopefully I can get it. Otherwise, I'll just. This came to my attention from Tru Law, or, back in July, and this is just a proposal for the board to decide if we want to move forward with it, or maybe, or maybe not. But basically, there's a nationwide lawsuit against Juul, that's J-U-U-L, the e-cigarettes, the vaping brand. Basically alleging that, that the company is fraudulently and intentionally marketed their products to children. There's coming up now, it's kind of a small review. At least 50 Michigan districts have joined it. And again, I'm not saying one way or another whether we should or we should not, but it's definitely one of those decisions that we should make together. Tru believes lawsuit has merit. It's been denied two motions for disposition. And the most important thing here is that the district really has no risk in this matter. So as it's been presented to me, it's really the fifth bullet point here. Schools that join this lawsuit will not be charged any fees or costs unless there's a financial recovery in the lawsuit. But even that, they'll be deducted from the school's lawsuit recovery. I feel like I'm working for Sam Bernstein's logworm as I read that. But, you know, it's one of these decisions where, you know, they'll determine whether there has been wrongdoing. It's just a matter of if Cedar Springs Public Schools wants to be a part of this litigation or not. They are estimating that if, if there is a recovery, if there is damages awarded, it will be between $200,000 and $10 million per school district. So it could be a large sum of money. And that's why I bring it to your attention, because where we stand on if this is, well, where you stand on e-cigarettes or not, those are real dollars. And some districts could potentially earn them, some, some are not. So it's one of those lines in the sand if we want to join this or not. I'm told the time commitment is minimal, three hours throughout the entire litigation. Probably on my part and some of our high school principals' parts to do this. And I won't read any more of it, but the deadline for board action and filing in this suit is August 31st. So it's something we need to act on by the end of this month. I don't know if the board would be comfortable taking action tonight, maybe for or against, but it is something that we could take action on. Not next for that, but I'll take any questions you may have.
So I'm with the National Association, and so we've just been waiting, waiting, waiting for data from scientific evidence to come back. And actually, vaping is more harmful than smoking because vaping impacts your air effects, and so it actually gets you popcorn lung, which there is no rehabilitation program, whereas smoking, you can protect the diet, the tar for as long as seven years. So I have been proactive in speaking and talking, and they, they did, like, cigarettes were marketed back in the 50s and whatnot. Vaping was, kiddos, it's something that can be a strawberry, it's just, it's steam and air. It's, I mean, you're pretty much ingesting disposable diapers. There is no, there is, there was no regulation on it. So I feel that our supply over the past five, six years has been affected by, by vaping. And I really feel strongly that this is something that we should actively have to send a message also to these companies because it's, it's, it's damaging these kiddos' lungs, and there is no free dial besides the lung friends plan. And that's the one. So that's just my opinion, and I just think the, the, many, 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 oh gosh, you know, like, training, everything, I've gone through, about the doctors, they spoke at Boma Hospital. I love being through lung cancer, but, so that's why I'm totally proactive about it. But yes, it is very, very, so we either fully support us joining that, and, and to make happen, to use it, to buy it. It's my personal.
Thank you, and it absolutely, you know, it takes district resources. I have not been a high school principal, but I've heard from colleagues and friends that are, that it takes time and it's a real problem. And that takes away from the other work that they could be doing.
Chris, I know you included the litigation packet, and it mentions the three hours that would be required. I'm just curious, do you know that that three hours is gathering more evidence or information?
What I understand, that would be, that would be just school-wide data, probably referrals, data out of our school that was related to vaping and e-cigarettes, suspensions, that kind of data. So it would be, you know, they had said, they estimated it'll take about three hours to complete our litigation. I imagine that'll be asked throughout it. See what comes from that. The information that I put in this, all the.
Yeah, I was just curious about that, because I agree with you, I agree with students increasing their vaping itself, and I started to create some issue. But yeah, I was just curious about that, because you were trying to get some.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the one thing here, it says, you know, school may not have incurred any vaping costs, but I, I would imagine that would be the data that we want, just to try to figure out.
Thank you for the personal piece. That was me, I'm not to be, but if there were two high school principals who had brought to us the books, we may have two cycles ago. Maybe.
So I have a question, Chris. So you said the, the recovery could be between $200,000 and $10,000. But it doesn't say what the potential legal cost could be. It says we wouldn't infer any legal costs unless there was recovery. Right, is there a scenario where we would get $200,000, but they would charge us a million legal fees or any kind of crazy math like that?
It's a great question. You know, my colleague at Tru has assured me, and I believe it's in the resolution, that the district wouldn't become upside down in any way on this. So it's, it's a fair question. I would want to read through it, find some comments, be sure of that whole aside, it's ended anything. But my understanding at this point in time is that we could help on some costs beyond, you know, what our setup.
And the other thing that comes to mind, and it was not just a thought. If the, if the district has not incurred large costs, I would incur some, but it feels like this money really should go to the kids who were harmed. So if, if this lawsuit's going to the school district, I guess what would we do with that money? Or I would love for there to be a path for this to get to the kids who actually had some damage afterwards, but right, it just happened to them, I guess, at the time.
Yeah, and I think that's a great point. I think that depending, I mean, obviously, there's a big question mark at this point in time, but if the school did receive a substantial settlement, I would think we would want to use those dollars for awareness, you know, for curbing further damages. We'd have to let it what's allowable as far as past students. You know, I'd have to figure out, just like $80 that come in, what's the, what's restriction on that? But yeah, I would think we would want to use this, earmark this specifically for this call.
Prevention.
Yeah. Right. That's what I was. What Chris said, though, it was a little bit of a fight, just don't make sure that any expenses could take speed. Yeah, I think we could, we could take action on it with that understanding, if the board wants. And then, you know, through that process, again, we have until August 31st to be sure that I can obviously, of course, but in the case we see the red flag.
Right, thank you. So you're moving on to discussion by the D professional development committee plan, the general state's possible and personal.
In the board book, the four from the state HHS, from, actually from Fitzpatrick People Accounting, about annual certification for planning qualified professional development as instruction. As you know, my department contracts the number of instructional days increased to meet the letter of the law. And part of what's allowable under that number of days is time for professional development. To know that great teachers are part of kids, one of the most impactful things, and how to have these highly trained and highly efficacious, makes for a great experience for our students. So you'll see that this certification asks that we have a board appointed professional development advisory committee. And because the people who are doing the professional development work, which includes our MTSS work and our PLC time, are all PLC members, administrators, and coaches through MTSS, as well as our district office team, those are the people that I recommend they be a part of our advisory committee because they're the ones that are developing the agenda and the plans for those days of the guidance of the district. So that it does meet the requirements for sketches, which are continuing class hours, that teacher certification part. It is aligned to our school improvement plan, and tomorrow we have our PLC here kickoff. One of the things I'll be talking about is making smart pills that are aligned to our school improvement. Again, those are the pieces that I talked about earlier, the right instruction that leads to a positive climate and culture. We have three really big target areas this year, literacy, which we heard we talk lots and lots about, math, which would be no surprise to anyone in education, and then positive climate and culture. So those are our three large new improvement goals this year. It has to be linked to criteria in our evaluation tool for our educators. And this plan is linked to 17 different areas in the teacher evaluation tool. So with very certainty, we can say it is most definitely firmly planted in the teacher evaluation measure. So we're just asking tonight that we will approve this committee of 41 people, and we can see through that documentation that there are four teachers from K5, from six, eight of the middle levels, nine, 12 at the high school level. We have electric teachers, we have special educators, administrators from all different levels. As well as non-teaching staff. And those are the recommendations that the committee have at least all of those numbers included, and then it'd be by and large mostly teaching staff. We see that it does meet those requirements there. So if we have an answer, any questions, anybody can ask about that. We'll take action on that tonight as well.
It's just a requirement from the mission.
It's, it's, it is standard. I, the last time we did this was two years ago, three, hold it. It was great to do that. Doing normal things. Great.
Any questions? Thank you. All right, we will move on to item F, a new policy submission proposal with Chris Haynes.
So uploaded in Board Book is two directives. So one is the existing document, Policy 2521, entitled Selection of Instructional Materials and Equipment. And then also you have a proposal, a revision proposal uploaded in Board Book. You'll see that the strike through context and the added language for consideration is highlighted in green in the, in the proposal. You know, recognizing the concern that several of our parents have brought to our attention, not only in Cedar Springs, but parents across the country in terms of various intellectual, political, social, and special interest issues, and how those items have found their way into classrooms across the country, or at least the perception is that some of those elements have been found their way into classrooms. Heidi and I, really Heidi, did some tremendous research and found some language that other districts had utilized to be crystal clear to staff and to their community that items like the Holocaust denial theory, or the 9/11 theory, or critical race theory is not permitted in curriculum, so that teachers can't identify items that are, that have not been approved and thrown those things in their classrooms without proper, A, permission, but also the presentation of both sides of things that are, that are potentially charged from, from a social or from a parent perspective. So for example, if you're going to speak on a political issue, you can't just share a perspective from one political party. You need to present a balanced approach, a balanced perspective, and share views with both political parties or multiple political parties if that's the case. And so the language as proposed really just creates a very clear statement that you can't, that as a teacher, you can't just bring in whatever you want. Things have to go through an approval process. If, if items are shared, they have to be shared from a balanced perspective. So. Add in order to it.
And the other piece of it is the board rejecting everything on instructional activity or instructional resources deemed bad news on the person. So we're not looking for any devices to.
So this is a first read. Really, it's an expansion because, you know, our curriculum is so much more than just materials and equipment. You know, our curriculum includes discussion topics and instructional resources. So the thinking is that this is a broader view, but also a very clear for staff because they're looking to present the goals and objectives for the specific courses that are taught.
Thank you. I mean, it's helpful. Find it. And give it clarity. Did you just? Something?
If everyone had been to be sure to pay before our, so we wanted to get on the agenda.
So. If we include this, because we are using. We now have a little bit to change. We don't.
Nioma provides us with four policy templates, and then it's within our, within your rights to modify those templates and include as much or as little as, as you want. They make recommendations as to what needs to be included. So in, in many cases, and I think this is a great example of a policy that was last approved in 2016. Things have changed in the last five years significantly. And also we've given those back with Nioma. Many times their policy language is clearly unfair. And this is an example of one of those policies, you know, selection of instructional materials and equipment. That's something that really could be used in any school district, in any community, in any state with a, with a. And so this really gives us an opportunity to clarify and, you know, create some language that would likely add value to other districts as well. If they were to see this policy.
Timing is a big issue for me because I want to get going with the school here. So we're gonna keep, you know, they have updates on us tomorrow. That's true. Yes, sir. I want to give them a mention to.
Yeah, I agree on that. I think that, because my thought process will be. I, I think that because my thought process will be very occasional in some districts. A lot of policy out there if they have a. First read through, it seems very.
So just a little bit of information on that. With Neoma input coming out, they're not going to put to provide insufficient sort of common support. And I think that's a nice reference. I, I think we can, I think we're in a position where we can, we can make some change there.
No, I just wanted to echo that. I appreciate that we're done there too. And then at first read, I, I have no issues that. Would very much support this. My question is just if, if it doesn't give me a response now, but just if teachers did use supplemental materials or including materials that do not follow under this, are there?
Are there consequences? Yeah. Yeah, so it would be like a board policy. You know, if, if there's a violation of a board policy, then there are, you know, follow up consequences that are progressive in nature. First, obviously, we would try to correct the behavior with a verbal, verbal warning. And then that would potentially progress to a verbal reprimanding. Or greater depending on the extent to which the given policy is being violated. I guess that's the other value of being very specific. In, in policy language like this, it helps strengthen our position to make sure that, you know, people are following the standard and they're working with Jen and the academic services team to make sure that what is being taught in our classes is aligned with the curriculum. And it helps our principals. It really, the language does provide us with some, some guarantees. It provides our staff with some guarantees.
So is any of the curriculum that we have?
Time out, you know?
The examples that we've been told about have been things that have been brought into the budget. Either from a seminar or. Yes. So if we have it.
You know, it's something that is like, it's easy to see a resource that is from the sixteen nineteen. It's easy to see how it's denied resource. You know, there are some things like the race theory that is more nebulous, you know? It's much more open to interpretation. And so, you know, there, there, there may be some things that are easier to say, this is, this is not being approved. It's a violation of this policy. But by having this as a starting point, you feel at least it's a step.
So I agree, I think this is stepping in the right direction. Just a question, I'm going to read this one sentence that says, "This policy shall ensure that social theories of any kind, ID Holocaust denial theory, nine eleven theory, critical race theory, shall not be presented to students unless approved by the superintendent." What circumstances do you think of if you want to prove that?
Yeah, I don't know, but I also don't know what the circumstances are going to be in three years. Or four years.
Yeah. I'm just curious. I just was curious why I would interpret it just to say, shall that be presented to students? Okay, those all seem like dangerous topics that are historically inaccurate. So it feels like if we present a balance issue, I get that, I can understand your heart. But to say this is a, this is a harmful, dangerous, untrue thing, and oh, by the way, this one's true. Like, just because of balance doesn't mean that we should teach it to the kids. So that's a concern.
And they would have to bring that to Scott with their, with their compelling plot. And Scott's clearly worked it over.
Yep. No, and I, and I hear, and I, and I know it's not that I don't think that you filter that. But then the next sentence is the one that makes me wonder what that looks like. So it's the responsibility of the board to ensure that curriculum standards are taught using well documented factual resources and not opinion or conjecture. So on one of those, would you bring those exceptions to us? Or how would we ensure that?
So Scott let you talk about that. So the, that talk of responsibility of the board, basically that's our direction to Scott. Okay. So that is, that's based on.
And I would work with Jen, and we would work with the principals, and we would work with the PLC leaders. You know, it would definitely be a team approach to, to any of these types of. Or any of these types of decisions.
And I think the other piece of that is if, um, we look at the overall curriculum, there's probably got to be some type of vague fault why. If there are people, we weren't saying views aren't short, don't have enough time. So why would we be adding something that might devalue humans, right?
Yeah, it's not that I think, it's not that I don't think. I, I think I agree with the direction that you guys are heading. My last question I can recall for us is if we're going to communicate this to teachers, we want to make sure that it's clear that we're not doing this. And so if I read that, maybe I need a lesson and then break some more questions next time. But when I read that, it almost looks like, oh, I want to teach some of this stuff that's hard. I just need to run by Scott. And I don't want that to be the message received by our educators. You know what I mean? So I want to make sure it's crystal clear, we don't want this in the classroom, that's all. But as I read that, that's something just came across weird to me.
And as I listen to you and listen to our community, thanks, Chris.
I don't want to.
I was going to cut out the same, same sentence that you referred to. We're doing standards are taught on the superintendents to ensure that's great for them. And then you, Heidi, had mentioned, well, that's our correct. Can we make that more clear that that is, that's what's in there? That's only, yeah, but that's right. I think very, very correct.
And that's part of the global role of the Board of Education. Sure, you know, your work is not to approve or disprove, disprove anything, you know, the day to day work that's happening. Basically, your work is around policy and hiring and firing a superintendent. So if I'm not doing the right thing, then you're fired. We're disciplined. So there's, you don't have a very burden of responsibility to know what's happening in every class, which you every day. But as you hear concerns from our community and as I hear concerns from our community, share those concerns with Jen and share those concerns with our principals and meet with teachers. That's, that's how the board hits that. But when you hear the repetitive concern, that we're not taking action, or I'm not informing you of the lie, that's when, that's when you step in. Take action. To prove this.
Nah, I don't want that to impress that with Scott. I, I sound like a lack of confidence or anything. It's just when I read those examples and then that followed up with that sentence, unless approved, you still. None of those things seem like anything I would be wanting to consider approving. So that's where the sentence just reads, I'll give it a look.
And that's by. We know this is very difficult topic. It's me after all this.
And it's a little bit like crazy question about the things that we, you know, because we have listed some things that might qualify as an unexcused reason for an unexcused act. We could list, you know, a boat of things that would be unexcused reasons. We just tried to identify some hot button topics right now to make sure that we were.
I would like to though, share my appreciation for you being proactive. Because I mean, as board members, we're paid for cheap working fees that we are at every month. And so the time that you're putting in all week long, just pretty much a part of your job as president. And being proactive and not reactive to what is going on in the world. I think we're one of the few districts that are listening. And then also, um, being proactive and not just kind of happy in case the mother, other districts are doing. We're, we're really being proactive in a sense. Setting, or kind of like setting a trend, I guess, and doing what's right. And so I really do appreciate all the work that's been put into this and then bringing it before us. If we can have a reading and look through it and, um, I think from the page, it's just, it's, I appreciate you really being able to bring it to us so soon.
Any questions? I don't have. Not a question, but I guess more to, to turn. If I, I would worry that we still leave it open a little bit to even wait to maybe decide. Or how they view the world thousand, two thousand years ago, whatever. And if I was flat, you know, it's balls. Still, we can understand where people come from, for us to learn better. So in that context, if we're not, we're not teaching it to enforce the rule. We're teaching it to develop. I understand. I just, I, I know probably everybody else, probably speak for everybody here, probably left the last minute on car. And like that a teacher puts some stuff in the student's hand and said, "If you are missionary to another country, you're racist." That statement was read off a paper that one of our teachers gave to one of our students and one of the parents brought to me. I've lost sleep over that. So if a balanced approach, and I don't believe Scott's going to prove this, but if one of those teachers thinks a balanced approach is, yeah, any of your parents who went on a mission trip, they're evil and they're racist because this paper says they're racist. And then the opposing view is, well, they're not, let's move on. That's not acceptable. So a balanced approach, I understand. If it's debatable, what I see out here is that in my mind, some of the stuff is just unacceptable. Thank you.
We are at the portion of our meeting where we have public time. And this is the time where we're, here's public event. Our public events for three minutes. So for this venue, we have the public time at Michaelville, right straight back from me. And coming in right there in the by the way. And do you know some people that have signed up? And send a few of those roll on the table, they're registered to speak. And don't feel threatened. This is the time when we respond back and forth. We have a superintendent follow up with you, but we're definitely listening. So we will proceed with public time.
There's some problems. I know they thank you so much for acknowledging the security and the donations that, you know, we're doing right now because we talk for children and not our knowledge. And I agree with that. I do want to say that I see no chance of leaving our present. I assume you're going with it. Make sure that the teacher's mom will have to come to you after permission to teach something for now in the textbook. So I have a personal model of books. All of them, especially. Because I tried to hold some of them together to see what's going on. And it doesn't break anything down for me. I have seen my daughter, the recent papers that I helped discuss here. And some of those papers were a bit questionable to me. It almost made me feel like, yeah, I don't want to. And I didn't break it up because I thought, okay, it's orderly. It's not bad, but it's orderly. And maybe it will be a little, but what else is, why else is it tough? Another issue I want to make is the fact that, that we're not going to be working against some of the current theory. However, I know. And ask over and over even to think of finding a way for us to not have a good test. I really feel like that we have not looked, we have not. Okay, maybe we need to look at the number of, okay, maybe we need to look at our stories. Okay, to make sure that we know why we're safe and protected before we start this meeting. I'm telling you, there are ways to get out of that, staying out of it. And I'm not pressing.
Yep.
And I'm just asking, I'm just asking to you to stand apart. I know I'm not the only parent in this room. I'm just not love my kid by the necks kind of thing.
I think you should all stand back.
Now they thought we'd do that. How much research we've done on why masks do work when they wear them for eight to ten hours a day? They have to wear them on the bus for an hour in the morning, bring them on the bus, an hour in the afternoon. It's one of the more forbidden, right? Your husband's in school and hiding them. I'm not. Again, it's not going to happen. Also, some of the predicament, these masks that we have been doing once again, I'm going to have to figure out where the limitations for school. Because this school is my family, my parents and my children, and I'm trying to make them healthy for me. And I'm asking you not to do that.
The next public time is by Sarah Smith. And if you have forms that you need to fill or you want to submit, and if you want to meet Jen Huberly at the table where you got the form, you can collect those and make sure that you have it out for your share of months.
So I took all of you, me and you all to speak about how the difference of what public transportation is. And what you're saying, like they're not on that. I remember they discussed some evidence that they had of soup wasn't in it. But soup wasn't not fully implemented. I cannot get out of the context on it. It's a public transportation, so I'm not saying why they're saying that. I know you think you're there, but I want to think about that. When you look at that, the other thing is, I also sent you a, a video of another school for a doctor presenting to their school board. And I hope that you all look at that because I spent, she came out from that. Because you two had taken it off, so I said, no, no, no. It was not available. If you still can't see it, check with me, I'll show it to you online right now. I'll let you listen to it. But why are we following CDC? They have done studies on it and have proven that masks are not good. But they're not listening to their own science, but what if they follow what they say they do, that I understand that? That doesn't make any sense. There's. Why are we following? Putting masks on whether from the doctor or wherever, but we don't look for who? Or we don't look for this? The side of this virus, it decides how human here, one human here can get through any mask, and it does. So then, look, they're not following the public system, or this issue, their own information. But we're going to follow the trust down to make those decisions on our behalf. That doesn't make any sense. They're just not vetting with their policies to what they've proven in your own state. So again, I ask you, why are we following this? Doesn't make any sense. The other thing is, is we want to know if a lot of people pull their kids off the buses that we want to take right now that we have. That you're saying they need to be masked. I'm sure some of you have that in your mind, they didn't have us. It is Tracy and us. If all these parents want to fit on or figure out how to get their kids to school, but they're not wearing on us, I can thought about that, what's the plan for that? Firstly, cool is going to be played with that. My thought. Also, I want to thank you, and Tracy for reaching out to me and standing up and holding justice and signing everything. I look down. the floor, just because I'm excited, I look down, I'm surprised to have further than the answers today, but this is what I am. Please go and look at those videos that we have on. Thank you.
Next comment is from Mr. John Vicks.
Evening, everybody. Well, I honestly want to thank everybody that stood up today. This is amazing. This is how we should be, be the people, tell our local service what to do, they don't tell us what to do. But I appreciate it. I have to talk about, first off, I would like to talk about, how many students have we lost? If I remember last year, we had forty-one hundred students in six schools. I believe now it's posted at thirty-five hundred people, is that a fifteen percent loss? Approximately five percent million dollars. You guys sit here and talk about budgets, you guys sit here and talk about, are you going to have staff? I'm not just going to have the money, because if we're going to have kids at their school, we're not doing the job. We need to stand. These borders are ridiculous, you guys talk about. I want to talk about the good versus the bad first. If there was a child on that stage right now, if you cracked it, would you stand for him? I hope so, because that's what a good person is. Any type of pain or infliction on a child, that's what a good person is to do. So let that sit into everyone in here, that doesn't displace the board, that plays a part in everything. We need to stand, you need to understand our rights, what we're the people, how we're going to actually do it. Because I can ask all of you in here, if you understand the first amendment, I'll bet you only three people, four people raise their hands. You don't even know our rights, you don't even know how to govern, you don't know how to run the government. It's time to learn. That, what Trent said before, it's bad, it's one hundred percent weak to get. Keep in mind, this is a COVID thing, I know I'm going to talk a little bit of conspiracy, but it's not. There's two losses in the world right now, one out of Canada, yes, or an example of COVID-19, they can't produce it, all over Canada, it's three. So whatever is on the sound, that's anybody can ask, is even real. There's another case of a, a beauty higher, same thing, they can't produce it. So I took Trent, and I am a Harvard student, and they extended, told me the lawyer, that they probably can't produce it either. So this is not cool, that would be, there's no facts, and you guys are the board member, I would really hope those would actually look at it. I presented all the people with that information for the last six months, it's all knocking me off. Do your job, help his kids, help the child on the stage, the pain, the emotional affliction, the suicide rates, all that, because they can't come to school like a normal child should. So with that, majority of the people are holding their kids out of school, because they don't trust the school, they don't like, they don't like the transportation, they don't like you, you're losing your job, and I do it. So please, keep that in mind, if you lose the funding, you lose the teachers. You're done.
All right, the next person sharing a public comment is Mr. Nicholas Biggou.
First, I'm here, well, yeah, I'm here, I got a good school, however, I'm going to be growing up, hopefully for another forty years. And, you know, I, I see so much of this, this COVID, post-COVID. And there's so much information that's being blocked out there. How, you, you've got to know, you look for this information, but it's not there. That same mask of work, in Costco, the, on the side of the box, these masks offer no protection from any disease, including COVID. Well, what does that say right there? I mean, we're, they're allowed to wear anything dirty, or a mask, or a mask, if they could be a mask, doesn't work as a mask for COVID or any disease. I wonder really, what's the mask of copy, other than be grating kids, controlling kids? You know? So, I guess, I don't, I just hope you guys really stand for the kids, and, you know, let them live a thousand. You guys probably don't even know of a kid that died COVID. You probably don't even know secondhand, okay? Oh, what's all the hate? You know? I mean, we see it, somebody dropped a deer in the school, you know, once every month or something. But, no, I think nobody died COVID, not even secondhand, thirdhand. But, the other thing I want to get to is vaccine, I know we're going to have some nurses from the medical, God help you, and give them one vaccine, one kid at school.
Amen. The next public comment is from Julie Kaiser.
All right, I have a few things to cover. We, as a team, put together a survey for the community that we try to reach out, just to find out what some of the concerns are. And we have come up with about three hundred and twenty responses, and I've sent all this information to you guys, and it's all about the comments that they have reached out with, as well as the results. But currently, we have about sixty-eight percent of responses showing that parents want mandates to be a choice, regardless of what everybody else thinks. We know that's for our children. Seventy-six percent say vaccines should be a parent's choice. Now, that's not just COVID vaccines, that's vaccines with Juggernaut, I believe, and forty-six percent show parents think these restrictions have caused mental health issues to their children in the last year. That's a large number. Seventy-one percent do not support mask mandates, and we have about two hundred signatures that support that as well, from the community that we have reached out to. I last again, what are the repercussions of not forcing this? I asked you last time, I sent an email to follow up with all of my questions, and I did not get a response from any of you in four weeks. That's disappointing, very disappointing.
It's very guaranteed.
The buses, that's a whole other issue, it is not public transport, public transport is defined in section fifty-three oh two, titled forty-nine, U.S. Eco, U.S. Eco, and there's not improved school bus services, right? That's actually what we need to, but there's no reason to have a mask on a bus and then not in a classroom. That's ridiculous. I don't hug you in the classroom, I can touch you in the classroom, but I can't sit next to one of the buses, or you're already doing it, you're going to be touching pencils and everything. They did it last year, regardless of whether they had a mask on or not, it's still going to serve the greatest. I have some concerns about the ratio of students to counselor. I heard that there was a counselor that was reading, you could see her trailer from Tel-Nex or places. I'm just trying to figure out what's behind that, it's a valuable resource, and I had a tweet firsthand, my son was in Mrs. Anderson's office, I don't know if she's around, but she's the one that goes that trailer to my son, and he was in her office every day. That was part of his, part of his planned day. He could take a break, he could go and see her, he could be struggling, and it was amazing. And to find out that there's time for somebody in the building for that, that's really disappointing. I can't even imagine my daughter, who's now coming in the first week that I got home last year, because I wasn't going to have all of this, and think this is normal, it's now coming into the school, and she doesn't have a counselor, she needs him, but her brother. I don't know what that's about. And hoping there's another plan that's just not that, set out to us, because it's not like they said, hey, we're taking the counselor out. Well, there's a plan behind that. Also, the COVID tanks, the COVID push behind the federal mandate, or the federal government, what they're saying, they're going to try and reach out to the school, and they're going to put people out here, and there is no place for that on school grounds.
You know?
It's not, it's controversial. If parents don't put their kids vaccinated, they know how to go to the doctor, they know how to go down to the health department, they know how to clean the plates, get what they want, that's what it is. So I'm hoping that our district does not do that. And if we're going to put masks on children that don't have vaccines, or are issues that don't have vaccines, it's a provision, just like CRT and everything else, which I also have in this survey, I also, thank you.
The last public comment is from Tita Tada.
From Tina Tada, member of the community, caring for every student, right, myself, also staff member. I listened to everyone on this night, and I know there's numbers, I have my own opinions, and I appreciate the passion of everyone that talks about public topics, and I'm here most of those talks tonight, but I'm not here to force management to be in the game. However, what I want to say is, to Scott, this team of administrators, you've taken some hard fits, but you've been resilient, and you believe that you're listening to the people, and that you're best in the game. For the past eighteen months, you have had to make superior decisions, some of these decisions we have never had, we wanted to make, but they're making agencies unfortunately now, and we want to make the decisions. You know, for growing up, the state brings, the state brings up schools, it has always been better children, so to be the first. And I think the one thing that we can all react to is that our kids are always, the children in this community are our future. Their minds begin to be molded in our school system. I pray that we begin to listen to school year for decisions to make, who continue to be guided by knowing the future of our country, by some of our hearts and passions.
So, this is a clarification, you had mentioned a sixteen nineteen project. Is that linked into the public development series, the rest of them, the long week? That's my question, I was just, I'm hoping that this, I believe it's, I think it's happened, I'm sure. So, I hear the dialogue, I think it's kind of sort of bringing in opposing views, and I respect that, I really, I like that, I like thinking about things that question my thoughts. But they're also exactly the opposite of what I think, I like to understand people's behavior. However, sometimes that's quite dangerous, and also, if we're talking about a very hot topic right now, this, in my mind, we're kind of being, it's important, talking about this, it's still being covered in slaughterhouse, and it needs to be covered in slaughterhouse, and we need to be able to put it, put it, and then say, all right, let's talk about white water, not while it's still active, while it's still being pushed. I think it's helping, I don't want to go about those things, but there's also a tie, you mentioned the platter, that was a long time ago, we can look back at that and say, that's kind of silly. But right now, when it's very hot, it's not going to happen, to bring it in and say, well, here's a legitimate point, it's not a, it's a balance, it's a lie, it's trying to destroy and to tear it down, just like, so long ago, Barack Obama years ago, Barack knows that we need to tear things down to remake and rewrite our histories and traditions. This has been a plan for a long time, just totally make it, so, we're discussing it years to come, but let it die first. So, again, thank you guys for all the work that you do, thank you for sorting the whole frontal attack, I say a lot of attacks, I really do owe you the work that you guys have been doing, and I thank you guys for the work that you do, so, keep it up, and we are looking forward to this school year, whether you're not, people know we are, it's frustrating about the masks, it's frustrating about the lives, perceived lives, it's chaos out there, and we're doing our best as parents, and I may do it, I'm frustrated a lot of times, but I give that to God, it's like, we're just taking care of it, but we do have a responsibility as parents, and so you take it, we're asking, and, yeah, it was the same thing about masks, I don't know, and I have a reason to have them, but, again, thank you for all the work that you guys. And we move to the action portion of our meeting. And first up for action, we have the seeking one, resolution, and I would entertain a motion for as presented. For, any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schopner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasury Gilmour?
Yes.
Justice Rebar?
Yes.
Justice Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed?
Yes.
Motion here. Actually, item C, professional development committee plan, I would entertain a motion as presented. So, for, special? Having none, Vice President Schopner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasury Gilmour?
Yes.
Justice Rebar?
Yes.
Justice Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed?
Yes.
Motion here. And it's time to go to the communication portion of our meeting, and I will start off by sharing your orders, you know, you've got communications property regarding masks, regarding research, and different conversations in industries, whether it's MBS, B, attorneys, whatever, those communications and contacts are going to continue, we know, nobody wants masks, so we're looking at the ways that if mandates come, we all hope that it doesn't, that can be, not moving the legal charges of our. So those communications will continue, for your information for deliberation, should we ever have to come to a point of deliberation, and we hope that we don't.
I would say that was, I do thank you for all of the research, yeah, I love that full time job, this is, this is essentially all to your job, I just appreciate all the part of it, thank you for that, it is good to see just different views out there and the masks. Yeah, I, I think it's good that we're exploring that, if it, if that's.
And I do think we're going to, we're going to, and we're running across things, everybody's thinking this, and, you know, we're giving content to whatever the law, not just, you know, the latest, you know.
Are you getting something here? First, I want to say, you know, some of these discussions may get heated, the reason that you guys see it as public, you know, we're going to share conversation, we don't have conversation behind closed doors, we have the public, so, I apologize if they get heated, I think, what you see is the passion that we have for the kids, and for people's rights, so, that kind of trust, that kind of trust, I'm sorry. Or, yeah, I do want to share something, in previous board meetings, we had, we had shared some comparisons.
And I would say that I do thank you for all of the service that you have. This is essentially all to your job. I just appreciate all the hard work. Thank you for that. It is good to see just the different views out there and the masks. Yeah, I think it's good that we're exploring actions.
And I do think we're going to create a community and address a lot of things. Everybody is thinking this. You know, we're giving content to whatever fellow, not just, you know, the least.
I had something. First, I want to say, you know, some of these discussions may be the reason that you guys see it as public, you know. We're going to share conversation. We don't have conversation behind closed doors. We have a public. So I apologize if they get heated. I think what you see is the passion that we have for the kids. And for people that's right. So that can trust aggressive math. I can trust a parent. Sorry. Or, yeah. I do want to share something. In previous board meetings, we had shared some comparisons with us with private schools. And so I did go out to, I think I helped Christian, I probably pointed to the person you shared this, not this document, but that one or something. I just was curious how it is they even manage to not follow mandates. Yeah, we did. So I got it to their website. I don't know if this is something you're about to air there. If this is something you could use or not, but I've got a copy for everybody. This is basically Oklahoma Christians COVID nineteen waiver. So they promote that they're going to follow that. If I'm understanding their position correctly. And they have all of their parents sign a waiver that said, we're not going to follow these guidelines. So I know we did something that set up for sports this year. I thought maybe we could run this by our attorneys, but if everybody wants to copy that, you know, that's okay. But just clear it's good. Public school, but it's something that can be investigated. And then the other wondering that I have once is, is it possible for us to, if we lose certain protections, is it possible to explore liability or insurance or some other level? But I don't know how to handle it at all.
Well, in documents like this, you know, there are segue for conversation. So we're not out there in forums, everything. We don't have that, but we can, we can ask the questions. So I would like to say, you know, we're open to having this conversation. And I think that that Sean was said to happen. That's, you know, that's not what I'm trying to do. So if, you know, we're in the game and doing and researching. So if that rootness, you know, that doesn't help anything, and that's the things that people are taught to live against, the growth theory, that's division. And we don't need any more revision. So I'm going to stand against that division.
Scott, I think you've done a great job. It is difficult. So I appreciate the work that you're doing. It is difficult. And like I say, you see the passion and stuff that we have for our students. But this is definitely very difficult. I can't imagine what you and the staff has to have face this year. I'm emotional and passionate about it. I know our studies are passionate about it, but I appreciate it for the first.
Just to add further clarification, because Trent said we, we're not talking about this. Have to be publicly, which is true, following all the meetings act, but we are engaging conversations. I know I've reached out. I'm like messaging for constantly. And Scott, you know, and having conversations and Trent and others. So it's happening kind of one-on-one within our ways of communication. And so I don't know if you want to comment further on that, but it's, it's hard to do. It's hard to do that work because we can only opt out. But we are engaging and a lot of researching and acting for a conversation as we can appropriately.
I think that's, that's part of the openness that we got to observe greatly some. We're, you know, we're talking whatever one they can talk to Heidi. We've had a lot of calls. And Heidi is the person that communicates to the rest of the board. She's the person that we select that has the information. So she has her, communicated to all of us. We get a rate with Trent, so we appreciate Scott's work as well. Big relationship there to thank Scott. You guys work hard.
One other item under board communication. I included a letter that was sent to me via US Mail. I copied that and shared that in board book from Randy Benham. So that you would have access to that. It was just a generic letter sent to the entire board of education. I wanted to say thank you to a member of our team who will be drawing this association with the public schools to a close in the next couple of weeks. Deputy Tom McCutcheon is retiring as our SR. So while his title is School Research Officer, his assistance from our school, he's been an outstanding member of the team who puts students in safety ahead of all of us. He's been committed to it, been here regardless of the time of day or night, or the day of the week or weekend. Just an outstanding member of the team.
All right. So that wraps us up to planning. And for planning, we have our next board meeting scheduled for August twenty-third. And we plan to meet. Even if that there's been more physical support board, we will stand at the chair at eight twenty-three.